I have a question. So I went out, I went to the branch committee. They didn't go to the mall. I don't know who was in the meeting. Because of the movement, they didn't meet. The branch office. Standing there, I didn't go to the branch. But you can't wait now. So they can move on. So I can't see anything. I see no one. So I'm not going to get that. I don't want to go there. I'm not going to. So I'm not going to go there.
I love people. I have made it. I have made it. Um, I talk about that. We need to remove the person. After that, I have a person, one of you. My first person. The chair wanted to. That's a hard question. I don't know if it's tough or not. But it costs us a lot. I thought we didn't. How many people were sitting up? Near the disposition. Most stakeholders. When I see a meeting. Who do you want me to do this? As the new caretaker committee. They don't know. Dominated. But I don't want to say. Not very well. But he will not go. Most stakeholders. They're not better for this stakeholder. And then, because the move. I'm on the list. I'm on the board. I'm such as a maker. I'm a pastor. I was very good. And they have been one of the members. I'm an executive member and he. I'm already in the city now. I'm working very hard. So who are they? Who are you doing? For these people that are perfect. For what? That is my point. For what? No, but you. They form a caretaker. Has it been dissolved? Where? This one now. Has it been programmed? Then lastly. Uh, where are you now? How about you, Pigi? I tell you now. How about you, Pigi? Are you Pigi or Chairman? I'm not going to. Come on. Come on.
Come on.
Yeah. I'm not going to go. I told you before, so I can tell you.
Yeah.
I'm not going to go there. I'm not going to go there. This is the. Uh, so I'm going to go. I'm going to go there. This is part of that. So. Uh, a lecture at the meeting. I'm going to go to the table. I'm going to find a half or half way. I'm going to have a little bit. It's all surprise. So. What would you say to me? You know, I come from there. I'm not going to. I'm going to. So I'm going to say. You do not die. You die hard. I'm going to die hard. I'm going to die hard. I'm not going to. I'm going to say. I don't want to die hard. You die hard. I'm not going to say. 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 So you don't have to be. I, 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 I. You're going to be. I'm going to go. Are you sure? You're going to die hard. You go. I'm not going to. I'm not going to go there. Okay. I'm not going to go there. Who do you like most? Chairman. Members. You can have a whole group. You may get the name for this. What do you do for this? Some of them are doing it. I'm not the caretaker. Number one. We don't get. Emery caretaker. I don't think. I don't know. I saw that. So I look here. Maybe that in three weeks' time. I see a. I can't. Twenty-two, two. Or. No, I'm going to say that the election not twenty-two. They will go there in the next year. Most of them are going to have an election. I was sorry. I'm looking here, looking here, looking here. Where are twenty-two? I can't survive the election. Wait here. Even when I tell the man who approved it three months. And from now. Okay, that three months. Okay, let's do that next year. That show us. Credit around two. Two days. I am. And between that three months. There is the election. Because we will do that next year. God, God. You don't know, Papa. Even if you're not moving. On a panel of empire. One year, Papa, there are more elections. Until the result or report of that panel of empire. We're not going to do this. A better election. The report. The government will have. Oh, a good case. I know it. I'm going to sell cases. I'm going to go there. I'm on a panel of empire. Now, without the panel of empire. And the report of that case. More than I sent by the email. I'm not going to go down. I'm on a panel of empire. One yard. You did the election. One yard. The poor. I'm not going to. One yard. The low don't know. You want to. Credit market. Panel of empire. We are. That can never be. Okay. The chair. Who is that? I'm not going to go there. I'm not going to go there. I'm not going to go there. They're going to come. I'm going to go there. I'm going to go there. I'm going to go. I'm not going to go. I'm not going to go. I'm not going to go there. I'm not. I'm not going to go there. Uh, so we are. We are going to marry. I'm going to go there. I'm going to go. No, I'm not going to. 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 Now. Pigi. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You don't get. You can't do it. You don't do it. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. So now you. I'm not going to. Now you go now. I'm not going to. Well, you can. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You don't go there. I'm sorry. I think those. Yes, I'm glad. You're going to. I saw that. You want to. Credit. I'm going to. I'm not going to. Credit. Yeah. Credit. Dance of reference. I'm going to. I hear there. I hear. This year. I'm not going to go there. I'm not. Someone. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. Okay. I'm not going to go there. I'm not going to go there. Uh, you don't like them. Uh, you don't like. Um, I'm going to go there. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. Um, the first person from. Sato. One of those currently nominated. In the state project. Who will be the. Highness. Um, this is. For now. I'm not going to. My name is. Don't make. More important. In that. I have the members of the ruling party. Or I'm going to. Some kind of. Relation. Or relationship with the. existing government. You are people with. Why I don't want to go? Because don't want to not resort. Whenever. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. So now. I'm going to go to the government. Don't make it. We're going to. I'm going to. Credit. I'm going to. Say. I'm going to. So these are the people. Thanks all. I believe you. You mentioned. You may not. But the nominee. I'm not going to nominate you. I have a reason. And now. The nomination. Let's go for. What's it for? Because. This is. You are now. So I'm not going to. I'm not going to. But you can have. When you see that. You can have. I'm not going to. Thank you. Then. Um, little. My difficult. CTC. I think. Uh, dissolve. I know. By virtue of this letter. I promise that. Those is. Secondly. I was at this letter of one day. That's what we see here. Because the server. I saw this. Then we went back. On Tuesday. With the. I find that. My Friday. Would it drift off to online? I need the. Our president. Thank you. Then the issue of. He addressed as Pigi. Um. As a matter of fact. I don't want to. Don't get. My. I'm going to. Now. Pigi. I want to. I'm not going to. So please. I don't want to. Don't you have? Get the. I'm not going to. But I'm coming. But now. I'm not going to. Pigi. I'm not going to. Pigi. But now. So you want. I'm going to. So I'm not going to. There were. I can. The Pigi. Great Pigi. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You understand? Okay. Uh, I'm going to. Uh, I'm going to. Where I am support. To be good. I do not wish. To be good. We could support. Then. I'm starting with. The most. Can't get. I'm going to. Twenty-second. June. And there. There is. That is second. Uh, what's that? I'm going to say after. Well. Um, even if. And I. Don't make. Don't make. I'm going to say. Cash for election. And not now. Don't make this over. For election. I'm going to. I wish for election. I tell you. Cash for. I'm not going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Very good. It is. You're going to. Here. Then. Um. I do not. See, I'm going. I'm going to shop. I hear. Three months. Uh, it is a desire. I hear. Don't make. At least we are. Uh, elected. I'll say. I draw. I draw in our. Side. I'm sorry. But I'm going to. I was at another. Using the. For the. Please. Definitely. It's important. Thank you. Then, um, the next one. So. How much? Panel of empire. Issues. Uh, the report. On the way. We have. Election. Yeah. I'm going to. But. Um, I want to believe. As a person. Now. Before the way. By. I've got. Ember. The truth. I got. Take. Second of June. Every one of them. I said to go aside. Issue. Because all of them. I insist. There you are. There you are. I don't take. So for the fact. You like this. You don't know. Because. The other assassination. Emery. We're going to. So the movement. Government. Must have finished everything. And I will. Maybe not. I have. Any other. But I'm not. I do not. Pigeon. I'm not going to. So that's. Then. Uh. Okay. Then. Someone. To add to. My. Dance of reference. Uh, the dance of reference. I'm not. I'm not. And. I am. Not true. I'm not. Also. I'm not going to. I'm going to. First. We're. I am. Your man. Your face. Pending. Don't make. You understand? Say. Go. So my terms of reference. I is the good. Don't make. That is why. I'm going to. Our. Okay. Self. I let them. You're not. No. Pending. Right. Okay. So now. I'm going to. Go. And I like three months. I hear. Then. Don't make. Then. You know. Three months. A matter of fact. And we are. We are free. About three months. And nobody. Nobody. Our people. Is stopped. So I hear. Our own. Also. I'm going to. Election. By that. Three months. Then. The government is. Pan. Governor. MZ. Second June. Why you business? I don't see any document. I'm not going to. You understand? Come on. Don't make. According to. The electoral. And electoral committee. And the immediate past. Caretaker committee. I'm going to. I'm going to. Because. Uh, June. I will choose. To. I just. I'm going to. I will choose. I'm not going to. I will. Uh, I will. Pray. About. Give. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. She's. You don't. She's. You're going to. 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 I'm not going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. You don't. I'm not going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. You're going to. You're going to. Man. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You don't. I'm not going to. You're going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. You don't. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. Most of them. You're going to. 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 Then. Three. I'm not going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. So you don't. You're going to. You're going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. I'm going to. I'm not going to. The law. I'm not going to. You're going to. You don't. You're going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. The law. You're going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm going to. You're going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. You don't. I'm not going to. 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 You're going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. You're not going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. You're going to. I'm not going to. So. I'm not going to. I preach this. Uh. Hopefully. Chairman. Chairman. Well. Pigeon. Uh, I'm going to. I'm going to. From. The government. I'm going to. So that was. I'm going to. There you are. I don't know. I'm going to. 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 I am. You don't. This company. So please. I'm going to. Because I can't. I'm going to. Say. I'm going to. 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 I am. Then. So they believe. Best. I'm going to. Well. We just. Pigeon. They're going to. And. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. So you're going to. I'm going to. Those who. You know. What? I'm going to. Presentative. You're going to. You're going to. It's. I can't. You're going to. You're going to. You're going to. So please. I'm going to. 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 That's. I am. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. So you do. I'm going to. You're going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. You're going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. Because. I'm going to. Share. Uh. Please. Please. I need. Now. Let me not start. I'm not going to. I'm going to. If you don't. For. Second of June. Am I right? That's twenty-second of June. That very day. I'm personally. But same to. From Lagos. I'm going to. Every time. I can't. I'm not going to. Even. I'm not going to. Don't make. Don't make. The time. Waiting. That date of June. Twenty-second. Get my election. I can't. That election. I can't. I get. Even the. Don't make that. First. I'm going to. That's. They would. It's not. In three months. Everyone. Against. Nobody. Leave. Yes. I'm going to. Don't make. Of that. I should. I'm personally. They are. Move right. To government. When you do. See. Night of. A great. And this. But the first. I am. I'm going to. It's all. They find. Support. Support. I don't. Who supports? I would pray. Help me. I am. Make you. Very happy. They. They are. What? They're. You're going to. I'm going to. I get. And this don't make. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm going to. Catch. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm not going to. I'm going to. For now. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. This. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to.